All right, it's six p.m. We'll call our meeting first. Start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The roll call, please.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Here.
Mrs. Rayle?
Here.
Mrs. Hett?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Bembel?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Thank you, Marine. Let's move into approval of the minutes.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of July 13, 2015, and the special Board of Education meeting open in closed minutes of July 13, 2015.
In motion to second to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of July 13th and the special Board of Education meeting will open in closed session, meeting minutes of July 13, 2015. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Minutes are approved. Do you have any comments from citizens?
None.
Okay, thank you. Moving to committee reports. John, would you like to start us off with business services?
Yes, sir. Thank you, John. Business services met on August 3rd and we started at 6:03. And we had 5% agenda items. Does anybody want anything held out? Okay. So, the committee recommends and I move to approve the inter-district agreement approval. We have 37 on the budget. Fifteen of them are new and with Stevens Point, they have to renew every year. So, the 22, some of them could be new, some of them could be just renewals. Stevens Point asks us to renew the inter-district agreements every year. The rest of them, we just agreed once and then we just throw them away. So, we have 37 incoming students. BS2, we have a motion for the service contract from complete control in the amount of $15,750 for $192 of service to be funded from the 2015-16 building and grounds budget. And I believe that is the same price as last year. Is that correct?
They've held pricing up for three years.
I was gonna say, which was the same price as before that. Right. So, they've been very good to us and holding the pricing for us. Plus, as I told us numerous times, we generally get more than $192 hours out of the month. BS3 was a supplemental group life insurance. This is a resolution to provide supplemental group life insurance to employees eligible for the Wisconsin retirement service benefits and provide post-age 65 paid-up life insurance coverage of 50% of the salary for all employees. We recommend for the approval. This is replacing the insurance that we currently had and it's actually cheaper than what we had before. WEAs, from what we understand, is trying to get out of the insurance, life insurance business. So, they increased our rates 27%. So, the new company of the day is found. We actually are getting better coverage for less money for our employees. BS4 is the wonderful bids for custodial supplies, general office supplies, emergency supplies. And they approved this, the summaries that were in the attachments on the August 3rd meeting. And BS5 is a motion to, if we have to leave the local government property insurance fund. That was the fund that Governor Walker wanted to kill. However, the legislature did not. However, they are increasing the rates. So, Dan wants to have the flexibility to go out and get rates. And if they are a lower rate, then we have the ability to leave that, give him the authority to leave that fund if we have to, to get new rates for a new vendor. So, that would be the action to leave the government property insurance fund, provided we have acceptable property insurance coverage obtained with another commercial carrier.
Okay, motion to second to approve BS1 through 5. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries.
All right, so balance of our meeting was purchase updates. We had updates on roofing materials, which most of it we will get. Some of it is paid for our deductible, some of it is insurance coverage. Striping for parking lot repairs. HVAC work for Kindwell. ASAP software services and our quarterly place lays on services. So, with that, committee recommends and I move the balance of the minutes.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the business service committee meeting minutes of August 30, 2015. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries.
Did we have any hail damage in the last storm?
Um, the last storm, yeah, we had a little bit. Oh, that Grant School and then a little bit at Rudolph, just a few things that we could find. So, the adjusters are actually coming up Thursday. Take a look at those. So, yeah, came wind.
I remember that was a hail valley.
At least they were different schools this time.
Yeah.
Everything north.
Do you mind if we go back and do a roll call vote?
Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay, would we please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine. Thanks for the correction. Okay, John, thank you for the report. We'll move into personnel services.
Personnel services met last Monday, August 3rd. We began at 5:30, hoping to get done early, but... And out of that meeting, we have 11 consent agenda items and they are as follows. One, the committee recommends and I move to approve the four resignations, two for professional staff and two for support staff. Second, the committee recommends I move to approve the five appointments for professional staff and one to support staff. Let's see. Third, we had discussion about supplemental pay for our technology education teachers and the committee recommends and I move to approve a pay increase of $5,000 for the three supplemental technology education teachers effective for 2015-16 school year. Fourth, the committee recommends and I move to approve a change in the employment status of school district nurses to designate school nurses as exempt employees with an annual salary of $40,500 for a term of 192 days within the school district fiscal year effective with the 2015-16 school year. That means they're no longer hourly employees with overtime. They're salaried and basically it's a benefit to the district. Fifth, the committee recommends and I move to approve policy 411, student nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policy for second reading with the edits discussed in committee. And you've got in your packet this week, there was some white papers with that. And then pretty minor changes. One of them was, we changed the word means to is on this policy. And the other one was, we changed conferences to mean a private conference, from conferences to one conference on this policy. On policy, consent agenda item number six, the committee recommends and I move to approve policy 411, exhibit one, complaint form for second reading. There was no changes to that. Seventh, the committee recommends and I move to approve policy 411.5, bullying for second reading with the edits discussed in committee. And those consisted of, we had a lot of discussion about including in that the distinction between bullying and harassment. We added a new paragraph defining harassment and then we decided we're taking them out and not having harassment in the bullying policy at all because it caused confusion. And, let me see, other one. Oh, in the very end, instead of saying the policy, we changed it to this policy. Let's see. On consent agenda item number six, the committee recommends and I move to approve policy 511, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity for second reading. There were no changes to that policy after our first reading. Nine, the committee recommends and I move to approve policy 511.5, employ anti-harassment for second reading with edits discussed in committee. And there were two changes there that we discussed and it was, we're adding administrative, reporting complaint procedures. We added administrators, teachers, staff and all other school personnel. And the last one, we changed it from private conferences to a single conference. And that was on the last page. Let's see. Consent agenda item number two, the committee recommends and I move to approve policy 511.5, exhibit one, employ harassment complaint form for second reading. There were no changes to that policy. And finally, number 11, the committee recommends and I move to approve policy 347, rule one, guidelines for the control and maintenance of student records for second reading with the edits discussed in committee. And that basically was that when we're talking about HIV and a student, that we're saying his or her authorized representative can also give this information. That was added at our meeting last week. So, does anybody want any of those held out?
Second.
I'd second.
Motion to second to approve BS1, BS11. All those in favor, please say aye. Both motion carries.
Then we had an updated report on the substitute teacher compensation. And basically, right now, we have a two-tier system on it. If they only work so many days, they're at a one tier and then after so many days of working, become a two-tier. We're looking at making that a one-tier. Let's see, what else? Let's see. The other thing was, what we want, we're asking for comparables with districts close to us and in the valley of what substitute teachers are getting. They haven't had a raise for quite a few years, but we want to make sure that we're not at the top of the pile and we're not at the bottom of the pile, but that we are competitive. So, the bonus, we're talking about a bonus pay option for substitute teachers, which would be designed to provide those substitute teachers incentive to great, to work a greater number of Mondays and Fridays. It becomes very difficult, especially at the end of the year, to get substitutes to work those two days so that if they may, if they work so many of those hard-to-fill days, Mondays and Fridays, at the end of the year, there would be a bonus for that. So, I guess that's, that's it. I make a motion that the committee approved and heard that. I'll say that.
Motion to second to approve the meeting minutes from the personnel service committee meeting of August 3rd, 2015. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Minutes are approved. Sandy, we'll move into ed services.
Ed services also met last Monday, August 3rd. Our meeting was called to order at 6:48. We had no public comment. We went into actionable items. We have consent agendas 1, 2, 3 and 4. Does anyone wish to have any of those held out? Okay, the first one was about Pountess and Penal Level Literacy Intervention Kits. Kathy Stebbins Hints, who was our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, explained how reading interventionists have found leveled literacy intervention, or LLI, an effective reading intervention for K through 2 students. And because of this, LLI would be useful, a useful intervention for students in grades 3 through 5. And so, we approved purchasing four additional LLI kits for elementary reading instruction and intervention at a cost of $20,900 to be paid for by curriculum referendum funds. Then we discussed the National Geographic Life Science Materials. The Science, CII, has found that the National Geographic Life Science Materials are an effective resource to support grades 2 through 4 in the area of life science. There are still some material gaps for specific science standards that need to be addressed to complete the science acquisition. But we did approve the purchase of elementary science materials from National Geographic in the amount of $35,067.75 to be paid for from the district curriculum acquisition budget. Then we learned about Renaissance learning products. And in August of 2015, the district contract with the Renaissance learning expires. WRPS currently utilizes the following Renaissance learning products. Star Math, Star Reading, Accelerated Math, Accelerated Reader and Accelerated Math Fluency. So, we approved the renewal of the purchase of Renaissance learning products for one year at a cost of $51,872.96 to be paid for by curriculum referendum funds. Then we went on to discuss Fuel Ed and Kathy reviewed the Fuel Ed program and explained how the program was utilized throughout the district. We approved the renewal of the Fuel Ed contract at a cost of $21,500 to be paid for from the following budgets. The Virtual School, Lincoln High School, East Junior High School, Wisconsin Rapids Area Middle School and the WRPS curriculum budgets. With that, the committee recommends and I move the adoption of ES1 through ES4.
Second. Motion to second to approve BS1, BS4. Marine, do you have a roll call?
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Okay, then we went on to get some updates. The first one was on the civics test. And beginning with the class of 2017 or current juniors, all students must pass the civics test before they are able to receive a high school diploma. I believe that was Kathy indicated that she and Jacob Bertinoli, who is the social studies CII Chair, will be meeting with a secondary social studies staff on the in-service day to discuss recommendations for administration of the test and then share that discussion with the social studies CII subcommittee. Committee will make a recommendation to the district CII and the educational services committee regarding how best to prepare and to administer the civics test to WRPS students. For the 2015-16 school year only, all sophomores at Lincoln High School will take the civics test on October 27th, 2015. We went on to discuss the academic and career plans, also known as ACP. Kathy reviewed the new initiative that requires every school board to provide the academic and career planning services to all students in grades 6 through 12 by the 2017-18 school year. Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools was one of 25 districts selected by the Department of Public Instruction to participate in a statewide pilot to develop exemplary ACP practices and processes. District guidance counselors were enthusiastic when the opportunity to pilot was presented to them. The district has established an ACP committee that will be participating in sessions with the DPI on next steps in this pilot. We heard about the Wisconsin Student Assessments System update. The 2014-15 WSAS results will be shared with the board in one presentation after the embargoes are lifted. That should be in September or October. Board members requested that they, that we be made aware when embargoes are lifted and test results are available. We also discussed course options and Kathy reviewed the 2015 Wisconsin Act 55, the 2015-17 by annual budget, excuse me, changes to the course options statute, which is Wisconsin statutes, section 118.52. As a result of this change, parents of students taking English 101 and English 102 will pay $296 for each class if their son or daughter is to receive college credit for the class. Students cannot, can still opt to take the class without credit and therefore without payment. And we also discussed future agenda items and information requests. The meeting adjourned at 7:44 p.m. With that, the committee recommends and I move that we accept the balance of the minutes for the August 3rd education services committee meeting.
Motion to second to approve the meeting minutes from the educational service committee meeting of August 3rd, 2015. All those in favor, please say aye. Both minutes are approved. Thanks, Ann. We'll move into agenda referrals, information requests. May I have anything to name? Okay, legislative agenda. Mary, what do you have?
Just a couple of things from Wasby and John Bevill's got some additional ones if I missed anything, so. One of the interesting things were the things that happened in the, in the budget and whatever happened to items that were in the budget. And I have three that were related to school items and I thought maybe you might just, I think we're aware of them, but first of all, the custom per pupil aid, the joint finance committee restored the $127 million cut that had been proposed by the governor. However, there will be no increase in this aid in 2015-16 compared to last year in 1415. There will be a $100 per pupil increase in per pupil aid in 2016-17. This aid goes to all public school districts. In regard to teacher licensure, the joint finance committee inserted new provisions that require DPI to grant a license based on the individual's licensure and experience in another state. These provisions were signed into law as part of the Budget Act. Under these provisions, an individual would qualify for an initial teaching or administrator's license if he or she holds a teaching or administrator's license granted by another state, is in good standing and has at least one year of teaching or administrator experience in that state. The individual must have received an offer of employment from a school in Wisconsin prior to applying for such a license. And the application must be completed by both the individual and the employed school district. Under the changes in the course options, as Ann had said, they've changed now that pupils can still enroll in those classes, but they, the institution can charge those credits and can charge appearance in the students. Let's see. Also, Speaker Voss created a bipartisan task force, two of them actually, on urban education and youth workforce readiness. Wisconsin's urban school districts have unique challenges and opportunities to meet the needs of their students. The goal of the task force is to provide tangible solutions to help improve educational outcomes. Task force members will study teacher recruitment and retention, discuss best practices to address truancy, below-average academic performances and low graduation rates and explore ways to improve access to technology in high-poverty urban areas. The task force plans to meet in four of our largest urban areas, Milwaukee, Green Bay, Madison and Kenosha, with the first meeting likely to be scheduled for late September. And the chair on that committee is Representative Jesse Rodriguez, the Republican from Franklin. And the vice chair is Representative Sandeep Pope, the Democrat from Cross Plains. And on the second one, the Speaker's Task Force on Youth Workforce Readiness. Wisconsin is one of the top states for manufacturing in the country. Despite our efforts to bridge the skills gap in the past few years, there are manufacturing positions that remain unfilled. Task force will come up with new strategies to encourage Wisconsin youth to pursue careers in the trades, manufacturing industry and technical fields. Members will explore ways to improve collaboration between schools, technical colleges and local employers, increase awareness of apprenticeships and internships in these fields and examine future industry needs and challenges facing our state. And the chair of that committee is Representative Bob Pope, the Republican from Stratford. And the vice chair is Representative Katrina Shanglin from Stevens Point. So, you know, we're doing more of that. Maybe they can send us. And then one other thing, the Wisconsin No Child Left Behind waiver was renewed. The U.S. Department of Education just approved renewals of state flexibility from mandates of the Federal Elementary and Secondary Education Act, also known as No Child Left Behind, for Wisconsin and six other states, Alabama, Arizona, Arkansas, Connecticut, Mississippi and New Hampshire. Wisconsin received a three-year renewal of its waiver through the 2017-18 school year, meaning it won't have to make another ask during President Barack Obama's tenure, if waivers even last that long, is what they're saying. And it's clear what the federal, it's unclear what the federal accountability picture will look like by that time, as a rewrite of the No Child Left Behind Act is currently making its way through Congress. For the moment at least, the Obama administration's waivers govern in most states. Waivers are in place in 42 states and the District of Columbia. And every state with a waiver has applied for renewal. In addition, Nebraska went after a flexibility waiver for the first time. So, that's what I am. John?
Well, there's one, two things there from Wasby. I guess that I thought was interesting was the number of high schools getting tech college credit has almost doubled since 2010. 2010, 13,000 high school students received college credit within the Wisconsin Technical College system. Last year, 22,000 students received credits from tech colleges. Now, part of that is what programs that we have, where we have dual credits and that type of thing. So, I thought it was interesting. The other part is that there's a conservative group out here asking, you know, judge the rule that the open enrollment program violates special disability law. Whether that means it violates everything or whether the whole open enrollment thing is bad or is going to be thrown out, who knows? There's a court case beginning for that. My opinion is that.
On, you know, the change in course options. Before it was, we also had to buy the books and materials. Did we not? When they took course options?
The dual enrollment courses, we do.
But not course options? They didn't?
And for the courses, yes.
So, does, does the change address that, those buying the materials now?
Well, we, for the dual enrollment courses, we still will.
Right.
So, for example, English 101, 102, which are our only ones. So, we still don't know. We really don't have guidance from DPI yet. We, we're not even 100, DPI and talking to them, they're not even 100% sure that parents have to pay for those courses yet. They're, they're not sure how to interpret the law yet. So, if you look on the DPI website, they really haven't changed their directions at all yet. On, like, for example, if we have a student who wants to go take meteorology at UW Stevens Point under course options, that they're not clear about, but they are interpreting the law to mean parents do, or that universities can charge us and then we collect money from the parents to pay for the dual enrollment courses.
Here's what it says and it says, "Changes specify that institution of higher education, including UW system, a technical college, nonprofit institution of higher education or tribal college, may charge additional tuition and fees to a pupil or parent or guardian of a minor pupil if that pupil will receive full secondary credit for the successful completion of a course taken through the course options program. Under this provision, only the institution of higher education may charge tuition and fees." And it says, "The JFC further provided the school board and the institution of higher education determine the amount of tuition and fees that would be charged to a pupil for attending dual enrollment courses." Like it says, it's not clear. I did talk to a friend I have that does some enrollment that, you know, just out. And the way they're interpreting it is basically they're charging fees for anybody that wants credit. And basically, they're not going to allow, if you're not taking it for credit, they may not allow enrollment because they don't want to. With their budgets being cut, they're not taking always spots from people in there that are paying the tuition to go there, so they're not going to take away those spots for high school kids to take for no credit.
We have three requests right now, Marine, or two requests from two pupils for some course options, three. And we're sitting on those until DPI gives us further direction, other than the dual enrollment courses. Because it just isn't clear. I mean, everybody, attorneys, they said we can go to our attorney, but, you know, you get guidance from attorneys. We kind of want to wait until DPI gives us the word.
Make it into rules as the game's being played.
Well, it's, it's difficult. If you read the law, it's just, it isn't clear. It's not to me, anyway. I don't know.
Okay, well, thanks for the update. Move on to our bills for the month.
Okay, I would make a motion to accept the receipts for the July check registry for the June books and the July check registry for the July books and the bills for both two Ks.
Second. Okay, motion to second to accept the July check register and for the June books and the July receipts for July, yes. Please have a roll call.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Marine, we'll move into new business. I made possible action on employee appointments, resignations and retirement requests.
We do have some personnel developments since our personnel services committee agenda was printed and mailed out the week before. So, I did come around just prior to the start of the meeting to distribute a sheet that lists three names that the administration recommends approval on. There are two appointments that we've been able to secure in the last week that we'd like approval for. The first one being Kristen Warner as the fifth grade teacher to replace a resignation for fifth grade at the Vesper Community Academy that occurred. The second appointment listed, Zua Kang Tao, is actually a current employee that is at a .8 FTE contract and we would like to increase her contract to full-time for ELL instruction in the district. And then third and final is, we did have a resignation from Kelly Elderson, a special education teacher in the district. We have received payment for liquidated damages for breaking contract from, from her. So, the administration recommends approval of these two appointments and one resignation.
I would make a motion to approve the two appointments and one resignation. I would make a motion to approve the two appointments and the one resignation as presented. Second.
Okay, motion is second to approve the two appointments and one resignation we received tonight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? We'll move to carries. Thank you, Ryan. We'll move into discussion on possible action to approve the annual declaration of parent notice of the district's student academic standards to be in effect for the 2015-16 school year pursuant to section 120.12, parents 13, and section 118.3, parents 1G and A1 of the state statutes.
This is not unlike the civics test. It came at us as one of the new mandates. Technically, this should have been done in July, but we were not given notice of this until July, after our meetings were already done, so there was an allowance made for school boards to take action the first meeting of the school year, and this year, it could be August. So, basically, Kathy created a grid for us that lists the different disciplines presented in our district and which standards we follow to include those various disciplines. We have to notice the board, and it's suggested that you take action on accepting these as the standards that we're using in our educational presentation to students. The other thing we need to do is, we'll post this, should you accept this, post this to our website as a notice to public interference as well. Kathy, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add?
The only thing I would add is, I did put some verbiage on the top, just to remind anyone who does happen to look at this, that standards are not curriculum. Standards are where we begin writing curriculum. We look at those, and from those, we identify the content, the skills, the benchmarks, the activities, the assessments, and all those other things that actually make up a curriculum. I think there's some misunderstanding in the public when they talk about the Common Core, that it is a curriculum, and it is not. So as you look at the, these, these are simply the standards our curriculum committees have used to begin actually writing the curriculum itself, which you all see as we go through the process.
Just some misunderstanding? I move we approve the annual declaration of parent notice of the district's student academic standards to be in effect for the 15-16 school year pursuant to section 120.12, 13, and section 118.30, parents 1G and A1 of the state statutes. Second. Okay, motion is second to approve the annual declaration of parent notice of the district's student academic standards to be in effect for the 15-16 school year pursuant to section 120.12, parents 13, and section 118.30, parents 1G and A1 of the state statutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. I guess we should look at our calendars, a reminder for the September committee meeting is due to Tuesday, the 8th, because Monday is that flavor day, so, those are in our calendars. And with that, we're done. Good run.